I'd like to ask the members, we didn't have a remote site, so I looked up, I've been asked by the Capitol staff, please ask our members to be as quiet as they can in the other locations, being able to hear what's being said, and make us be able to hear what's being said at the other locations. I'd like to recognize the House and Senate Sergeant Arms that we have located throughout the state, and thank them for their help in making today's session. And I want everyone to recognize the Sergeant Arms and the members that were present at Wally, who didn't want to go to each remote site as a test, and ask the presiding chair of each remote site, please introduce the members and Sergeant Arms that are at your side with you. So with that, in Wally, we'll have the House Sergeant Arms, that's all, Sheriff Reggie Mills, Martin Lee, Terry McCall, Thomas Terry. For the Senate, we have Larry Hancock, Charles Mosales, Becky Meyer. And also to point out that our fourth order is here, Bobby Ward, of Wally, and we appreciate her continuing dedicated service. Again, I welcome Mayor and Martin to this public hearing on the District, I represent the David Lewis, the Senior Chairman of the House, to let you know your District. With me today are Chairman, Senator Ralph Heiss, of the Senate, read this committee, and also Chairman, Representative Nelson Bobber, of the House Committee. With me in Wally are Representatives Jackson, Dixon, Paul Hardfield, Harrison, Deal, Brange, Davis, Howard, Hunter, Hurley, Shaw, Malone, Willman, Ray, and also Senators Bluey, Lee, Newton, Harrison, Gunn, and McKissler. At the Wally site, did I miss any member of the group? Chair, we want to point out there are several members who are here, who are not members of the Senate, and thank them for their attendance. We're going to go now to both the Community College. To both the Community College, I'd like the Chair to introduce himself and the members over there with him at his side.
Hi, my name's Harry Brown, I'm in the Senate, I represent District Six, which is on Sullivan Jones County. I speak to you out of the house. Right, right, sorry. No, I'm getting my, my, I keep representing, uh, Moker and, uh, and Perry County. And then Norman Sampson, who's in the Senate, he represents District Three, Two, which is Corret, Raven, and Hamilton County. Our Sergeant Arms, uh, on the House side is Bill Bass, Jim, uh, Morris, and Jim Hamilton in the Senate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Next, we'd like to go to the Halvast Community College, the chairmen of Halvast Community College, um, recognize themselves, you know, this is the voice that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Representative John Bill. Uh, thank you, Chairman Representative John Bill, Alamo County Community College. Uh, with us today Sergeant Arms, um, from the House, Bill Moore and Doug Harris. Sergeant Arms from the Senate, Tom Burrows, and Frank St. Peterson. Uh, we also have in attendance Representative Bobby Richardson, and staff from Senator Andrews' office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Bill. We're now on the test and introduce our Fayetteville site, Fayetteville Community College, Fayetteville Tech Community College, I guess. The Chair, Eric McKeon, who's in the.
Representative Bob, so we can hold this, we have a shot for the Fayetteville.
Let's try it again.
Is this better?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Representative John Songo. Um, the co-chair here is Senator Vern Jackson. Representatives in attendance are Representative Billy Richardson, Representative Floyd, Representative Lucas, and Representative Pierce. Our House Sergeant Arms, Representative Chairman David Lightyear, and our Senate Sergeant Arms of Childs Jeffries and Terry Edmondson. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go now to the Gilbert Kennedy Community College, on the side of Gilbert Kennedy. Your Chairman, Eric, can identify the sales and the members.
Hi, hi. Wait, can I get, I can't, can you hear me yet?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
This Representative Nancy Aron Stevens, our Chair, Committee on all the sections of the district way. Our Sergeant Arms from the House side are Warren Hawkins, now at McCullough. And, um, we have our votes from the Senate. In addition, we have two other members present, we have Representative Evelyn Terry and Senator Gladys Robinson. Did I leave anyone out? We're, we're good.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to go to Central Beemont Community College of Charlotte, the presiding chairman to sign you and introduce himself or herself, if there is a present.
Good evening, Chairman, ladies. Uh, John Corbett, Governor of North Carolina, House District, ladies. With us tonight is Senator Quaidell, Representative Dewan, Secretary, Senator Bishop, Representative Cunningham, Representative Carney, Representative Felton, and Representative Pittman. Our Sergeant Arms from the House side, Joe Crook, Hustle Salisbury. For the Senate, Linda Matthews, Billy Grisham, ready to go.
Thank you, Representative Torres. And Caldwell Community College, will you sign in the Caldwell Community College?
Thank you, I'm Senator Warren Daniel. With me from the legislative delegation tonight are Representatives Johnson Jordan from Tagga County, Representative Hugh Blackwell from Burna County, and Representative Dustin Hall from Goddow County. Sergeant Sergeant Arms, if you would raise your hands, um, is from the House, Phil Riley, Fairmore, Terry Barnard, and John Enlow. And we also now Officer Kenny from the General Assembly Police in Raleigh.
Very good, we welcome you all. Ladies and gentlemen, today's hearing is to have on the part of the two communities to hear both the comments on the proposed 2017 House and Senate plans to comply with the court's order in government in the state of North Carolina. Besides this location here in Wally, since 23, the legislature office reports, we have identified and recognized six satellite locations. They are Central Beemont Community College of Charlotte, Fayetteville Tech Community College Fayetteville, Caldwell Community College Hudson, Gilbert Technical Community College of Jamestown, the Halvast Community College of Bullin, and Butler Community College of Milwaukee, Washington. I'd like to remind members of the public that we will also accept and comment online at the General Assembly website, and via physical email, as well as anyone, uh, we are accepting commenting those form. If there is someone who would like to offer input or was not able to be here today, members of the community do have and will have the ability to review and view submitted written comments. Now that the introductions and the sound checks are out of the way, I'd like to thank the members of the public for being here today and for participating in the democratic process. As you may be aware, the General Assembly has a deadline of September 1st for adjourned due districts. Do you community release maps that we need for review? Those maps are online. I also hope that there are hard copies that you sell. Our hearing tonight is so that we can hear from you and your input on the districts themselves. You should have noticed an opportunity to sign up with the Sergeant Arms as you walk in the room. The Chair also follows and point out that there are members of the public that are in Room 544, which is also the legislature office, but they go here when it's being said, here. Many of those have signed up to speak, we will certainly have staff coming back and forth to the room and maybe this room when it's their turn to speak. Each speaker we recognize will have a grievance to speak. The Sergeant Arms will have a yellow card that he will flash when your grievance is nearing a close. He will, he or she will look at your card when your time has expired. You've been coming on whatever aspects of the map you would like to. This is a free country and this is an open hearing. It is helpful if your comments focus on the maps that have been presented or alternative ideas you have for complying with the court order. I want to emphasize that the committee has got criteria after its first meeting, and that criteria has been public for weeks now. Those criteria are equal population, conglery, abiding by a mandatory accounting group, trying to keep towns, cities, and precincts covered where possible, encompassing protection, consideration of election data, and drawing districts without regards to race or ethnicity. What we'd like to hear from the public specifically is how it better meet our goals to comply with those criteria. Addressing comments towards a specific House or Senate district, and referencing a specific criteria that could be better met would help this community in its work. Written off prepared topic points for sitting for, you know, is also an excessive weight to go on record. However, with those comments stray from the objective of the day, which is to comply with the court order to redraw the maps, they may not be the most respectable. You are, of course, ready to do so anyway. So with that, we're going to move now to, I'd like to, uh, recognize our Senator Heiss, the Chairman of the Senate, to give you the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a moment to clear up any confusion, uh, we have, uh, one of the Anderson groups in the state have been sending out information today, uh, the general public hearings today and tomorrow, versus the sites for tomorrow hearing. Uh, today is the holy hearings for this committee, holy public hearings for this committee, uh, there, and I just want to make sure to clear that, uh, confusion.
Over the line, we do the effort to try to facilitate moving around and getting as many people to speak, um, in as timely a fashion as possible. We're going to start in Wally, and then we're going to go to Jamestown. And then to Caldwell, based on the list I have. In Wally, and the Chair will apologize if there are names that are mispronounced, the Chair will ask, when you speak, if you would please pronounce your name so that the court will, we have recorded. The Chair, if you want to call three names at a time in Wally, and then move to the next locate, location, where we will take two at that locate, location. So the first three in Wally, the Chair, he apologizes for any mispronunciations, uh, Chawan, Reynolds, or Neves, apologize for handwriting, uh, Eva Athlee, and Julie from Cooley. If you would please approach the microphone in the rear, uh, we see our Sergeant Arms that's standing there, he will, uh, help you to speak, he will turn the camera now from the chair to the public and to prepare, uh, in Jamestown, the first two are Janice Seaver and Alan Beggins, and so the Chair, he had to prepare for that. But again, Chawan, Reynolds, or Neves, apologize for mispronouncing your name. Uh, we will need, and you will please say your name in three minutes.
My name is Echot Athlee. Maybe some John can help me, John, come here, I'm a satellite patient on the Mar Street. I come to you today as a mom. A Wally resident who was on March 1st of this year, hit heaven, while active carpooling at Western Elementary School on Strickland. A school that has been passed over for voting, voting many times. A school that my son's our teacher has a bunch of, about 300, almost 150 students, and under the school days. A school of yelling that occasionally smells like swamp gas when it's hot. The carpooling may really be moved off Strickland if the school was rebuilt. The North Carolina General Assembly controls our state, and rightly disheartened even in fairness, by enabling North Carolina to move on a democracy. Politicians should not select their voters. He uses the same consultant whose word was well-known and ruled unconstitutional. How is this different? This committee is reflective of the supermajority created by the Jerry Manberry. It feels like a sham. I think it is time, in clear view of Charlottesville, to call this process what it is, a little elected, terrorized archetype. You do not want to be remembered as the folks who did their best jimmy friend impersonation to disenfranchise minorities, and continue to disenfranchise with judicial Jerry Manberry. Do not give the label of racist to your children. This committee, or rather, the supermajority control, slits hearts and souls of the generations who fought for liberty and justice for all, and not be remembered as the inferior people. Don't have fun Nazis. Aren't Jewish, I can say that. Stop Jerry Manberry now, let me be clear, Jerry Manberry is white supremacy. Please defer reparations for the last seven years of litigation. Give us automatic voter registration to be Jay Dean as a reparation. Please defer reparations for the past seven years, thank you.
As the next speaker is coming up, um, we will, we, the Chair, Chair would again remind the people, uh, the members and the people that are present, to be quiet so that the comments can't be heard. Uh, do you please say your name and your address?
Uh-huh, my name is Julie, it's Tom Flitt. And, uh, we just have to include the more details, like it addressed specifically. My comments are really about the value of balance and equality, just very soon. If competition is bigger business than the two roads, then it should be bigger for government and for citizens. Jerry Manberry is historical in Carolina, citizens of all political spheres, because they stack the deck so heavily in favor of one party or another, that there is no true competition of ideas, values, and candidates for general clash. This pushes the good competition to primaries, where candidates are first, or more extreme in our, in this, on a smaller group of voters. As you all know, extremists can certainly win elections, they just don't govern them. For example, a small group of extremists can make the high tech, etc., and maybe vote ridiculous things, like these white hat brooms, as well as serious things like people's discrimination and people's health. I vote for balanced competitive districts that produce the best government, and I hope that people will also vote for balanced competitive districts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chawan Reynolds, Neves here. Not seeing that person, the Chair would like to enter for the record. Chair was handed, um, public comment on the, 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 the core messages shared, this is produced and paid out by, uh, the law, obviously, don't care a lot, and the Chair was made this part of the public record, uh, this committee, um, and colleagues will leave the lot of all of the members. Now we're going to go to the Jamestown side.
Eric, can you hear us?
We can.
Okay, Representative Shane, I just wanted to let you know we have three more legislative members to join us. Senator Love, I believe he's still going to be in for a moment. We have Representative Tracy Harrison and Representative Cecil Rock. We want to let you know that we are ready for our other speakers, important.
I'm Janice Seaver, a voter in Milford County since 2006. What's the cost of Jerry Manberry? The cost to so many of us of lying representation in Wally. My representative, the Senator, do not listen to me, because they don't have to. They listen only to those who vote for them and to their big money governors. They do not represent my position. My vote does not count in my district, because it is structured to keep the current party in power. What is the cost of Jerry Manberry? The cost of laws passed that benefit so few? Laws that hurt our state in the long run? Laws that damage our economy? Laws that limit public education? Laws that limit full access to the polls? Laws that transfer control of local government from the people to Wally? Laws that limit access to healthcare for thousands of North Carolinians? They pass these laws because they can't, because they have Jerry Manberry state districts that guarantee their power in Wally. What is the cost of Jerry Manberry? The cost of offending the unconstitutional districts and the unconstitutional laws that the General Assembly has passed? It is our tax dollars that pay to get hurt. Our tax dollars that can be better spent on something else, that should be spent on anything else that would better get the people in North Carolina. We are not sitting at the current process or the current maps, holding promise to be any different from the past. We are tired of paying for Jerry Manberry.
Good day, my name is Alan Beggins. I live in Winston-Salem, and I'd first like to thank you for holding these hearings regarding the creation of fair bipartisan election maps to our state, and for all of the citizens that have come out today to voice their concerns. Thank you as well. My biggest fear, quite frankly, is that the comments made here today and from across the state will fall on deaf ears, and as citizens of this great state, once again go unheard. I'm here today because the issue of fair voting maps is one that concerns me as a citizen. This issue concerns me not for my own individualized impact, but for the thousands of North Carolina citizens whose voices are muted from great and unfair elections. I look at these proposed maps and I see little to no changes to the way they break the system from one side. I see no bipartisan effort to create fair maps that hear the voices of each and every citizen in this state. Instead, I see districts like Wyoming that are whittled out with small slippers of the community set aside for the minority party, as if this somehow creates the illusion that these maps are fair. There are many solutions to this issue that would revolve with fair elections in this state. I've heard suggestions of district, district being bicep code. I've heard of district being by county, population setting the number of representatives and senators. In fact, most of the suggestions I have heard have been far more plausible and fair than what you have presented to the citizens as your fix. I use that unintentionally, as all you have done with these maps is continue to fix the system. Clearly, these maps represent the level of concern our assembly members have for their constituents. This is not myth, this is fact. Across the state, our citizens are dealing with issues where solutions have either been discussed or being ignored, evidently because it doesn't fit the agenda. This needs to stop. If you want to be an assembly member that represents the people of this state in a manner that is beneficial for all citizens, if you cannot and will not do so, then it's time to get out of the way to allow someone else to create fair election maps so that you might be released of your burden. In closing, our state's motto is esse form benar, to be rather than to steal. However, the current state of affairs in the General Assembly, perhaps along with new maps to be adopted in the model, liberabilius pre, per dis, democracy walle. Thank you.
We're now going to the Caldwell side and the Washington side. We have a plan after we're through, if we do three from each side, so the Chair can hear you, we're going to do three from each side, we're going to do Caldwell, we're going to Todd Scott, Deborah Moore, and Pastor Keith of East, and then we're going to go to Washington, we're going to do Ritter James, Hal James, and Paul Nissen. So we're looking at Caldwell's side next.
Good afternoon, my name is Todd Scott. I'm the first vice president of State Bill in WACP, ranked. Um, in August 2016, the three judge towns ruled that 28 of 170 North Carolina House and Senate districts were drawn in second grade, and weakened the power of the now been wearing the roses. They were illegal racial Jerry Manbys. Public lawmakers appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court, but it breezed the panel. August, the first 2017, that panel gave legislature the new deadline. We moved this, redrawn this map from the judges by September 1st, or the use of 2018 legislative elections. This is all a shame. All these maps we got is a shame. This is like all the school on the first day of school, and your teacher tells you to have the end of the year test today, any discussion. Legislature leaders, team of staff, avoid fixing their unconstitutional maps. Federal judges have reviewed them for not taking it seriously. Every single correct in their legal maps, the public lawmakers say they are serious, but they have hired the same consultant, Thomas Hopefeller, who drew the current legal maps. Is naturally known for bringing maps to help his Republican clients. Declared that he, that they will not consider the race of the voters, that they would never stop them that draw by itself. In fact, that approach ignores the direction of the court's example, where the black folks have a first chance to elect candidates of their choice in their district. They have declared they will consider past election outcome, and the ability of their party to win elections in their district. They admit they will draw districts for parts of their family. They have refused to review, reveal the new map that Hopefeller has already drawn, which would give North Carolinians time to write and more input or go to hearing. We should have been at a bigger hearing than we are today, but who found out about you? They didn't want everybody to know about you. How can a public legislator elect from a legal district to draw firm maps, especially when they use the same mapmaker and highly partisan voters? North Carolina lawmakers have used unlawful Jerry Manbys to win elections in 2012, 2014, and 2016, then passed time control in the central, illegitimate General Assembly. The legal maps have protected legislators from being held accountable by voters. About ninety percent of the state legislators now have safe seats with no a little partisan competition. General Assembly leaders have spent $4.8 million, tax sales money, to defend their maps in court, and they got beat every time. I would like to leave this to all the legislators. Matthew 25:40, the king will reply, truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, it did for me, it did to me.
My name is Stephanie Roy, I'm with the State of Congress in WACP. North Carolinians remain, man, born, North Carolinians are tired of Jerry Manberry and politicians.
Can we get a mind for the Speaker?
Please.
This is ridiculous. Get a reminder, that's what I was going here.
And this poll shows that four out of five North Carolinians vote 80%, saying that it's not fair for politicians to draw their own districts. That includes 85% of Marcy Democrats, 74% of Republicans. That includes 85% of Marcy Democrats, 74% of Republicans, 80% of the independents, as well as 75% of the Black Party, and 80% of African Americans.
Ms. Moore? Ms. Moore, we're going to add a minute to your time. If you could, please sit a little bit closer to the mic, perhaps a little bit slower.
The distributing process must be open. A four-way ratio and content gerrymandering allows voters to pick their own political representative, not the other way around. It should be searched, a cross fusion of the states and adopt principles that in urge and deep community environment, fair and fair, should follow these basic principles. Grace is a key. Maps draws must ensure that it is possible for black voters to elect their own candidates of choice as required by Voting Act rights. One person, one vote must be equal to opposition and obey other laws. Map draws must create compatible issues without our, districts must be not skipped and joined into one, and joined into one point. No parallelism. Maps must draw and use address and current lawmakers. Voting histories or voters other than must help. Respect communities of interest. Maps draws must board the value of communities of similar culture, ethic, and local government districts. Respect downers. Maps must show effort to keep counties whole. Before it is approved, a map must equal and override basics, using tools recognized by important methods of gerrymandering.
The other sound was.
This speaker will not bring the equipment with him. The equipment is provided before us. I apologize for any inconvenience, but this is the best we have at this point.
I'll be very appreciative about this. How do I need this side? City limit. We're taking it. Now, any time you have a city limit, you're going to have two different state centers representing you. This city is collecting taxes, the state's collecting taxes, and the county's collecting taxes. Anytime you separate a city group from, they're divided. You've done the same exact thing, including a unwanted relative in your house to share with you, because you're going to have to come to a consensus on all these different issues. That's basically all I got to say, that any time you invite a city limit or import on a city limit to meet your vote, that's where the problem comes in. But it is not fair for residents to live in a municipality anywhere and have you voting for this district on one side and this district on the other, and pay taxes to that city and that county. It all needs to be, all municipalities need to be under one city's district. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
This is Assistant Washington side. The chairman here, he's recognized, Renner James, Howe James, Carl, Caldwell Mischka.
Renner James and Howe James, Nick Hall.
I'm Renner James. Ladies and gentlemen, I am a constitutional conservative. I too, although I'm a constitutional conservative, speaking this, help?
You're fine, you're fine.
Although I'm a constitutional conservative, I too dislike the type of communities by which a city or county, whatever, I think should be able to try harder to keep the communities. There is another concern I have that is much stronger than that. Yes, the Republicans do like the law, but the Republican platform is fairly, very valid, and I thought that. However, there is only a small percentage in the legislature, ladies and gentlemen, who truly adheres to that platform. Some of those are being put into districts that are not hospitable to, and that is an absolute tragedy. Larry Pittman, Pobere's County, is one of those examples. Pobere's County will have three different district counties. These will be with a black, conservative, and party. There is someone who is less conservative, white next to one of the conservatives. This is not good. There are concerns all around the state that want Friday regulations, that they will not support Republicans just because they have an argument for it. If that Republicans does not support, will support the Republican platform. Please don't make the state appear to be headed for one. Please take a rapid action and make this right.
Somehow, to the God in praise gentleman, I'm on the Coastal Carolina Tax Report Association, an organization that advocates minimum government and maximum freedom, preservation of free enterprise in the United States Constitution. We have two chambers that are closed in the General Assembly. The districts are reorganized by these new district maps in such a way as to separate them from their base supporters. There's St. Cook, District 1, Representative Pittman, Districts 82 and maybe a part of 83 on that board. Both of these gentlemen have been very supportive of our cause. I selected five bills that have been consented by the President of the Legislature to help determine the support of our cause by the members of the General Assembly. They are, one, the Gun Bill, House Bill 746. Two, the National North Carolina Constitutional Regulation of Concealed Weapons, HP 145. The actual Get Bit Common Core Bill, HP 417. Bills who sent October 13th from the Protective Youth Bill, HP 344. And the Marine Fisheries Regulation Bill, HP 867. That wasn't a random election. At the beginning of the session, those were the issues that we were pressed by this assembly. Due to constraints imposed by the Senate leadership, Senator Cook has not been able to overcome any of these barriers, or he's tried hard. Representative Pittman has been a primary sponsor on three of the four bills and the fifth bill, Marine Fisheries Regulation, we do not want to pass. Representative Pittman has strongly supported our position. Please reject these proposed district maps and build these efficiencies up, Rick. Thank you.
My name is Carl Mischka. I'm the chairman of the Third District GOP. Meeting has passed, the chairman of the Crayville Valley GOP. I'd like to defer my time to my vice chair. Is that possible? Who is on your list to appoint that will never get to him, and he has some very constructive three districting candidates to make. That passes the question.
Oh, I think we will get to him eventually. We're going to go through this on the list, so.
If you're ready to do that? Thank you.
We're going to now go to the Charlotte side and the first three speakers, Jacob Hunt, Sarah Feldman, and Henry Martin. We'll do the Charlotte side, I recognize the three speakers, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Hunt, resident of Huntersville, North Carolina. I must admit that I am not adept at the complex demographics of our state to know whether the new districts are gerrymandered or not. Perhaps, perhaps if it fixes the racial gerrymandering, but if so, that is a victory indeed. But seeing that it was made primarily by one political party, I'm still skeptical of its pervasion. So I'm here to call upon the General Assembly of North Carolina to end political gerrymandering, which undermines our democracy. After the election in 2016, Governor Cooper narrowly won by just .2%. Now, in a politically blind system, this would naturally be coupled with a near 50-50 split among the parties in the General Assembly. Yet Republicans hold a two-thirds majority in both chambers. Clearly, something is awry. I recognize that political gerrymandering is not illegal, but that does not mean it's right. The process greatly diminishes the voice of the people and undermines our vote. I am generally annoyed when the government is compared to a business because they serve two wholly different purposes. However, there are some similarities. When a business has an inferior or unpopular product, their consumers can reject it. It is now up to the business to improve the product, give the consumers what they want, or face the effects of the free market. When voting districts are designed by the legislators, they do not have to face the consequences of unpopular policy. This, of course, leads them to pursue policy that serves not the collective good, but rather the good of the few. I understand that when the Democrats controlled the General Assembly, they too drew districts along politically favorable lines. But how many times must we repeat this state? How hyperartisan must we become before this cycle is finally broken? So again, on the general, I call upon the General Assembly to uphold democracy and allow voters to choose their policymakers, not allow policymakers to choose their voters. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Feldman. I'm from Charlotte. I'm a proud 2014 graduate of Project High Go Panthers, and I'm here today to talk about racial and partisan gerrymandering. As we all know, the court declared many of our legislative districts unconstitutional racial gerrymandering. Now to you, members of the Joint Redistricting Committee are tasked with remedying this violation of the Constitution. But what do good districts look like? First of all, good districts must follow the court directive to consider race to ensure that minority voters have a fair chance to elect candidates of their choice. In the court case, the state actually argued that it considered race in the 2011 redistricting process to comply with the Voting Rights Act that mandates that minority voters should have this opportunity. However, the state could not prove that it used race for such benevolent reasons, and instead, the court ruled that the use of race unconstitutionally violated minority voters' rights. Fortunately, this is your opportunity to make amends and truly empower minority voices. So, how are you doing? Well, the other day, Representative Lewis tweeted that race was not considered in the drawing of the new proposed maps. But not considering race is not enough. The court was very clear that race should be considered in the drawing of legislative maps, but that it should be used to empower minority voters, not silence their vote by shoving them into as few districts as possible. But empowering minority voters to have the opportunity to elect candidates goes beyond a just consideration of race. In a state like North Carolina, where race, where voting is racially polarized, and where, as you are well aware, upwards of 90% of black voters consistently support Democrats, only a legislative map drawn without partisan bias can be an appropriate remedy to an unconstitutional racial gerrymander. But instead, as Representative Lewis has admitted, and as newly released voting data shows, these maps were drawn with an aim to cement the Republican majority wrongly, even if Democrats overwhelmingly win the popular vote. The problem is that in North Carolina, partisanship is racism. Partisan bias in districting prevents minority voters and those that agree with them from having their voices heard in Raleigh in proportion to their vote share. Concentrating Democrats, often synonymous with minorities, into a small number of districts is wrong, whether it's for Republicans' advantage, whites' advantage, or both. And with that, I urge you, members of the Redistricting Committee, to do the right thing by creating new maps that ensure that minority voices are heard in Raleigh and that let voters choose their politicians without stacking the deck against one political party before a single ballot is cast.
I believe we had a moment in Charlotte.
If you look on your map and look at the southwest up to Pineville, around, down to Pineville, up to Huntersville, Corneas, that's my district. My name's Henry Martin, and I'm a taxpayer in Mecklenburg County. I pay a faggo and a lot of taxes, and I'm a property owner, and I have to drive up 77 all the time. And it's really, it takes about an hour and a half, two hours.
Mr. Martin, the people foster speaking to the microphone.
I'm sorry, Davidson, Huntersville, Corneas, Pineville, and Charlotte, okay? So how does this, how does this one senator represent all of these distinct municipalities, you know, faithfully and effectively? It's my, it's my, I'm saying that any senator, Democrat or Republican, can't effectively represent the way this district, the way it's drawn. So it's going to be a problem for whoever has to represent this particular district, and I think it should be redrawn.
Thank you. We're going to now move to the Fayetteville location. And our Fayetteville, uh, Fayetteville, Bobby R. Chinko, Jerry Ronan, and Minister. I apologize, it wrong me, I believe is the last name, so Representative Senator Jackson.
My name is Bobby Chaffler. I, and I am a citizen, I'm a citizen of the United States, and I wasn't planning on coming here today. I've been, I watched the political arena on TV, on the paper and stuff. But today, when I saw this map of existing North Carolina Senate district, it reminded me of when my little kids were small and they were coloring. And I would look and I'd say, "You're coloring out of the line." This map was certainly coloring out of the line. And, and the proposed district is not a whole lot better. But I just have one thing to say, that God said that a house divided could not stand. And it seems like we are getting more divided as the days go by. And it's, to me, my answer is, it's greed. It's not more to have the- It's not more to help the fellow person that's less privileged than you are. I built my life on helping people that's less fortunate than I am. And I guarantee you, you people that don't do that is missing a blessing. I just wanted to see the ones that drew these maps. If you need any help, I'd be glad to help you. Because I think I can do a better job, and I do have the people at heart and not my next run to see if I'm gonna be re-elected. And you know, that aggravates me when politicians always say, "I can't do this because, oh, no, I can't do that because I might not get elected next year." Well, who do you think you're up there for yourself? You're up there for us. You're working for us, and we expect you to work for everybody's better, not for just Republicans and Democrats. I never liked that, anyway. I like people to work to get the good of everybody. And I hope that y'all will do better next time. Thank you.
Please look left in comments so everyone can hear during the public hearing. No, sir. No, sir.
What's your name, sir?
Representative John Bill. I'll give you the chair.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. My name is Jerry Reinholt, 516-year path drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I support the House redistricting plan for Cumberland County, my county of residence, for the following reasons. First, the number of split VTDs between two or more districts in Cumberland County under the current 2011 plan will be reduced from 31 of the 77 precincts to six of the 77 precincts with the proposed plan. The plan confines the splits between only two House districts, while the current plan includes several VTDs split between three House districts. The boundaries of House District 43, my district, is tightened up considerably to look more like an ink spot rather than ink splatter. I believe the benefit of these changes to Cumberland County will result in the following. First, fewer ballot types may reduce the cost of elections. Secondly, it will reduce opportunities for poll workers to make errors in selecting the current ballot. It should result in fewer spoiled ballots and more accurate contest results with more voters using the correct ballot type. Next, it may provide better constituent representative with a tighter voting district boundaries. And finally, it will benefit candidates for House Representatives by reducing the number of precincts and perhaps enticing additional citizens to run for elections, because it will also reduce then the cost of campaigning, a competitive campaign. And with a fewer number of precincts, it will enable better get-out-to-vote campaigns in terms of knocking on doors and doing other things. Thank you.
With the name of God, the benevolent and merciful, the all-wise, true living God, I give you all the greetings of Isamaa, which is heard around the world. That's my introduction when I go to the Maricón State Legislature for the past 35 years, with deans from Fayetteville State University to see my team, which is Marvin Lucas and the Legislative Black Caucus. I've been going before Marvin Lucas went up there. Greetings, everyone. Fayetteville has a solution for the rest of the country. We must realize who we are. The others like you before, like myself, we see Fayetteville as a shining light on the hill. Others see it as a dark. Now, God says in Scripture, "The devil's strategy is secretive meetings." Secretive meetings. The secretive meeting took place last weekend. I saw Angela from the Legislative Black Caucus on television, and she was jumping up and down as the spokesperson for the Legislative Black Caucus. Where are the maps? They should have given those maps to her and the Legislative Black Caucus and the rest of the Democrats, especially last Friday. Now, here we are in Fayetteville. We have great growth and development. We have the base small state incoming. We have Fort Bragg, the largest military base in the world, and the second Pentagon in the world. Most generals and officers are in any place in America except Washington, D.C. Pentagon. Part of my work includes that. Now, in terms of where do we go from here? Let's look at the history. The Fayetteville Observatory used to have a monument on the front of the paper, a picture of the market house, a slave house, as part of my work with Clinton Harris, a lot of the old American state. We forced the Fayetteville Observatory to take that picture off. That was about 20 years ago. So, we're really out front. We're really out front. The other thing, the other thing involved, I think it's Hornet County, come out and be seen in the hood. He's one of our good friends. We're glad to, we're very elated to see Legislative Black Caucus, Marvin Lucas, Colin Pierce, and yes, Billy Richardson finally showed up. We're not gonna mention the other one. Okay, now, clearly understand that this is the 150th of the Fayetteville State University anniversary. Second, always universal in the state. We want everybody in the country to come to our celebration. My time has run out, but I want to thank you for the America experience, which is the greatest country in the world. And we're gonna show the rest of the country how to follow Fayetteville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now gonna go to Marquise Thompson, Marques Thompson, and Kim Newton. And then we'll return to Raleigh with Ellen Eisenberg, Tommy Cottrell, Gina Cruz. And that works, so maybe they'll vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, for the record, I want to note that Senator Don Davis has joined us, and we'll start with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. As I said, my name is Marques Thompson, and I'm...
Hold each speaker.
Okay, my name is Marques Thompson. And so, we are all here talking about democracy. And democracy, as you know, it does have some problems. It's only as good as those who participate in it. It's susceptible to things like money and politics and manipulation, that kind of thing. However, democracy has...
That's the general hall, guys. So, you, that's the key, coordinate with the outside.
What's wrong? Hello?
Switch.
Okay. Switch mics? Okay, all right. Are we ready? We good? All right. So again, we're talking about democracy. I know that, I've said that, you know, democracy does have some problems. But the competitive advantage that democracy has is that when it's done right, when it has things like fair maps, then what you get is you have two sides competing, the left and the right competing, and only the best arguments, the best ideas, the best people rise to the top. And that's the competitive advantage that we have in North Carolina that many other states don't have. And so, when we have, again, a good process, we get good results from our democracy. So, in order to have good results from our democracy, we need fair maps. Fair maps is key to that. So, let's look at the process that we're into making these maps. We have, the maps were drawn by someone that was known for rigging systems across the nation. This process of making these maps was, said that they would discount or not consider race, which was the whole reason why the maps were unconstitutional in the first place. But yet, they would consider who had won in the past, and that would be a consideration for drawing maps. And the last thing is, talking about this process of drawing these fair maps, we just got the maps just recently. I mean, we've known about this process for a while. These were just given to us Friday and today, and a lot of the data we still don't have. So, it's been a bad process. And when you have bad processes, you get bad results, right? So, we already had a legislature that was elected by unconstitutional districts, so that's a bad process. But we're trying to get that process fixed. In order to do that, we need good processes. And so, I urge this legislature to do this for democracy. We're not talking about left or right here. We want the best results for North Carolina. And that means the best process in our democracy. So, let's go back to the drawing board, get someone that everyone can agree on is a fair arbiter, and let's draw these maps so that we can get this competitive advantage that only democracy gives us.
My name is William Hodge, and I'm a 35-year Halifax County native. I didn't understand the need for a statewide public hearing on voter suppression issues, especially because we didn't have the appropriate data to study before we could come make our comments. I have some general comments today, but I will agree with the last speaker, bad process. The topic is not new. The nation's Supreme Court and our state court have ruled often about the use of race as an unacceptable parameter for establishing voter districts. The legislature has purposely dragged their feet for three-state election cycles where races, where race was used as an illegal factor in establishing voting districts. This resulted in a Republican veto-proof control of state government, and that's never a good situation. Why is race an issue in 2017? In 2012, nationwide, only 16% of African-Americans were registered Republicans, and only 6% voted for the Republican presidential candidate. This small percentage is shrinking daily, especially after the last few weeks of news from Charlottesville, Virginia. Race is an issue, especially in northeastern North Carolina. According to the 2013 census data, neighboring Bertie County had the highest percentage of black population in North Carolina, 62%. Halifax County's 53% was the fifth highest. Seven counties in North Carolina were above 50% black population, all Halifax County neighbors. Contrarily, 34 mostly western counties have black populations under 10%, and 23 of these counties were under 5%. The Republicans used their legislative powers to diminish the majority-minority voting black population in eastern North Carolina by assigning black voters into as few voting districts as possible. From my perspective, other critical issues have been left unattended by the General Assembly. Eastern North Carolina has a history of underfunding and unperforming public education, a majority government responsibility. This has resulted in unacceptable academic performance in public schools in eastern Northern, North Carolina. Six of the bottom, six of the bottom nine academic proficiency school districts are in Halifax and neighboring counties. Without sufficiently funded education, the area's been unable to recruit employees to represent textile jobs. Halifax County's 7% June unemployment rate was the fourth highest in the state. Neighboring counties experienced five highest jobless rates. North Carolina lawmakers recklessly gerrymandering practices has led to cost litigation and put our state in the national spotlight. Our legislators must enact House Bill 200, which will establish a nonpartisan redistricting process. The bill has overwhelming public, public support with both red and blue legislative support. Thank you.
My name is Kim Engku, and I'm a retired neurosurgeon. I live in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, and Nash County, and I'm a member of the Rocky Mount Racial Justice Group. Last year, the redistricting plans have been judged to be illegal and legal and guilty of racial gerrymandering by the highest legal structure of the land, the U.S. Supreme Court. You are tasked to redraw new district maps for public review by September the 1st in preparation for the 218 elections. First, I want to point out that releasing the maps and information on the redraw district map so late and so last minute on the day before public hearings is an act of disrespect to all the people of this state. We need time to study and respond to them. You're not giving us our due. This last-minute release maneuver smacks of dishonesty and secrecy, a lack of openness, which is a disgraceful act for public officials paid for with public dollars. Second, when I look at the new maps, I'm amazed by the contortions and varied shapes of many areas. It looks like a collage and a distortion of reality. It's so twisted. It takes a lot of work and conscious thought to come up with such a map. The persons of persons involved must have some directed purpose for coming up with such a contorted picture, and not to mention getting paid with millions of our tax money and insult to injury you deal. It represents to me a culmination of the attempt by the current party in power to hold on to the power at the expense of electoral freedom, and it is both racist and divisive. The North Carolina legislation has already acquired quite a bit of notoriety for its electoral shenanigans. Some examples we have encountered at the last elections include limiting early voting times, changing voting places to be less accessible to people of color and poor people, voter ID requirement, and decreasing the number of places where new and registered, unregistered voters can sign up. The electoral freedom of poor people and people of color keeps getting narrower and more hammed in. Now you're dictating to us where to vote with this new map. Of course, it also impacts who is running for that district, so we have few choices, less voices, and no power. Do not think that this, that we would just allow this without a fight. This country is already, already is an uproar over the many racist and divisive moves by the central government. Already, both black and white people of conscience are standing firm and standing together to beat this reactionary tide, like the event in Charlottesville and the recent events here to remove icons of oppression. I respectfully submit that you redraw your redistricting diversity of our people here and do not target minority people, people of color or poor people. It will go far to reflect decency and some moral integrity among you guys.
Thank you. For the President, we're rolling aside here, and we'll begin with Speaker H. 4, who will move to the next. Last speaker coming in, in the interest of the time of this conference. We'll also take us up to you to round people that have a bit, at 6:30, we'll be closing Simon and Lewis, so if you cannot get signed up, I think you're so hard to tackle. We'll begin with, on the period, Eisenberg. Is that a sound up? And who are you ready to listen to?
My name is Michael Eisenberg, I live in Lawrence, North Carolina. I have long attention to the students. I think everyone needs to listen to the public and very thoughtful and helpful suggestions that I share. I've listened to the last, the most, the longest time I've been buying, only once to listen to the public and work the Democrats and fire out his decisions in the car. I can read the end of this morning regarding the political data regarding the maps, I knew I must speak out. Representative Wilson did not listen, he was lying and made me up comments. These maps are, these maps are bad and worse than the ones that were drawn in 2011. Having that is bad in regards to race. Well, before my opinion on that, I'm telling you with Reverend Barker's comments. In regards to partnership and the spirit of the public and feeling, we're listening to the citizens' pleas. Our 50-50 state is not, is not going to be large having any difficulty with it. The Republicans show, we're gonna be able to decide the criteria, and I'm interested in what you have, Democrats. When you vote, you have to say, it's not sensible amendments they offer. Your votes against show their true colors. You do not care about the vast majority of people in North Carolina. You don't care about their well-being because if you did, you would, you would be for the health of the state's environment and health of the people. If you set long-term Medicaid expansion and estimate the monitoring on food projects. You don't care about the children, you're not attempting to destroy the public education and service that you sold off. You don't care about women because you continuously attempted to pass laws to take away their healthcare. You don't care about the people of color because you have passed voter suppression laws. You don't care about the poor, but you would not eliminate the Indian expert from the working world. We do care about the wealthy because you did eliminate the state tax performance. We do care about, you continue to support the tax system that favors the wealthy and businesses by lowering the rate to the lowest in the South. You care about the wealthiest and the businesses as you continuously promote about deregulation. The Democrats, let me actually tell you, the people of color, the fair maps, the turn your backs on them. Your ideas are morally bankrupt, and the people confirm that by electing the white people government. I was taught you don't hate the player, you hate the game. In this game, you must take hope, as the game is rigged and it's not rigged to the very least. I heard a 19-year-old that one reason he's out fully intelligent, remember his age, he picks all this body, the death is likely, he will never take less account. I will read you the words of my father, who said, "For so long ago, he sent me here when I was a young man, and it got into my heart." One word for me, and you do exactly as you please. So all I can say is, I hope that if you do out of the drugs, we have to, of course, take these maps and draw them in the dust and with it along. And, okay, a special counsel to redraw the map. Shame.
Thank you. Uh, a few things that, uh, with the other sites that we believe will, um, help with this transition between sites are, we're going to ask to change the order. Uh, so after the three more speakers are on, we'll go to Central Pymont, uh, then to Caldwell, then Gilford Tech, then Halifax, then Booker, then Fayette Tech. Uh, we also will maybe change the NASTA records by the Puyton College. Uh, so we hope that the tech will shoot that one across. Um, given that, we'll move on to our next speaker, Aaron Ollie. Tommy Flotari?
My name is Tommy Flotari. When my family and I moved to North Carolina 11 years ago, we fell in love with a place we believed was the heart of the New South, a place to progress where people valued education, the plan, civil rights, racial and social justice, and a collaborative, open, change force for the good of all the people. Sadly, we subsequently fear that we go to the hardy version and the hatfield version of the party, where because of what one grandfather did to another grandfather 40 years ago, one particular party felt entitled because they can to crush the very soul of North Carolina and return to the ways of the Old South with its implicit and its not-explicit flight supremacy. In the central session, this fear was confirmed as it applies to supermajority and morally and unethically, they didn't even ignore for their grandparents as they use phrases such as "it's constitutional," "it's legal," and "it's what you did before." But I never heard, I never heard, "This will help the people, this will make our state better." I'm disgusted with both parties. North Carolina has evolved toward a fly scenario with the supermajority picking on the major market. I'm disgusted with gerrymandering and voter suppression that allows an illegal and immoral, skewed supermajority to exist with steamrolls anyone and anything that stands in the way of their special needs of support, whatever happened to the idea of a public service to the public good. I'm sure anyone who remembers the movie Karate Kid. In the competition at the end of the movie, the evil sensei tells the student to deliver an illegal strike that injures the kid. When the kid meets the bully in the finals, the sensei wants to get help extended to the bully to unethically impact the kid's damaged player. Ultimately, the kid wins against the bully. In around the North Carolinian legislature, there was also a sensei who was too ancient for creating these godforsaken, immoral, and unethical maps. And the people in this room know who they are. But the people of North Carolina, especially the poor and the people of color, are like the Karate Kid. They will overcome illegal, unethical, and immoral legislative behaviors that continues even today, since these maps will only have the pet of racism, 17% of the districts. The committee's choices simple, do what is right, moral, and ethical for all of North Carolina's people. Create fair and equitable voting districts or face the inevitable turning of the tide and the historical iniminy. The choices here do not be a tolerable version of the disgrace we sit in the White House, and always remember, all political power comes from the people.
To you, Congressman, recognize for Tom Hanks' integrity.
Hello, my name is Jim Engku. I'm a North Carolinian figure up here for Progressive Turnout Project. I'm also a concerned North Carolinian who lives here in Maui. Progressive Turnout Project has been working tirelessly to fight for fair maps for myself and my fellow North Carolinians. We deserve fair voting maps that are drawn by a nonpartisan redistricting commission. We deserve maps that are drawn without the use of any partisan voter data. We deserve maps that comply with the Voting Rights Act. We deserve maps that don't protect incumbents who won based on maps that were ruled racially gerrymandered. We deserve access to the map drawing process. We deserve ample time to overview the maps and plan to attend these public comment periods. Four days is not sufficient time for new maps to be reviewed. It cuts the public out of the process. Holding these meetings at 4:00 p.m. on a Tuesday afternoon is unfair to the working-class families that you represent. Look at how many people are here and across the state with four days to dance. Had we had them the time, we would have filled 20 more rooms, at least. We deserve representatives who actually represent North Carolinians. This committee needs to be better.
Make sure everybody in. You recognize for Tom Hanks' integrity?
Good evening, thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Sarah Baker-Holken, and I've lived in Caldwell for over 40 years. During that time, I regulated what we call speaking to senators and representatives about environmental and health protections. These include making our schools, restaurants, and bars, and hospitals to bang them pretty, for which I am very proud, and never thought someday I'd return to ask for protection of the vote. We desperately need new, fair, and legal voting districts. I waited a year for new maps and instead got them the day before this public hearing. That immediately tells me how much you value the public's input. I wouldn't have a group of leaders from 28 illegally drawn voting districts to possibly be charged with drawing the new maps. And I'm shocked to hear that the same company that drew the illegal maps was rehired to draw the new maps. Your actions are stunning and immoral. It's memorable. You're creating and solidifying your legacy. I am currently reading a book about the fight for the right to vote by African-American leaders returning from World War II. The top leaders such as Mayoral Evers knew that they risked their lives in doing so, and too many were murdered fighting for this right. Instead of denying the right to vote, you are engaged in something also good. You are going tirelessly to make people's votes steaming less, while also making it harder to vote. This is your legacy. You are the equivalent of white supremacists. But I, and many of the North Carolinians, are paying attention. Some of us are here today to let you know everything we can to stop you from your ill-intended needs. We see this as a vital issue, the keystone to a democracy. I expect this will finally be decided by the courts. I attended the judicial hearing a few weeks ago of the U.S. District Court with this issue of the voting maps to discuss. I applaud the courts for their action. I conclude my comments by saying, I've heard former U.S. Attorney General Eric Holder say that North Carolina is the worst state in the nation, the worst regarding gerrymandering. That may be okay with the current leadership of the General Assembly and the officials from the 28 officially illegally drawn voting districts, but it's not okay for the people of the state. I am not worn down, I am not discouraged. In my work of public health protection that you've all benefited from, I learned basic proof. Where the greatest need is, the greatest. Where the greatest need is found, where the greatest need is, the greatest pure can be found. That is my hope for you, me, your families, your grandchildren, is that one day soon, we will have the most fair and just voting districts for the good of the whole. May it be so, let's go.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now move for four speakers from Central Pymont's side. Back to four speakers.
With public forum platform, it's, uh, decrease in public input because of its inefficiency, um, having microphones not muted at all of the sites while people are speaking, including the chair of the whole committee's mic not muted, is very frustrating for people who want to listen and actually get input. But I do thank you for the opportunity to, um, to speak. We appreciate the committee's work to produce maps to improve upon the current maps, but there's a long way to go, as we've heard a lot of people say. Real public participation requires time. Citizens have had only three days to look at the House map, and two days for the Senate, and just a day for the data. This severely limits the amount of time and has denied voters the real chance to have their say. Some of the committee's nine criteria, such as more compactness and less precinct splitting, were welcome improvements, while others have no place in drawing fair districts. For some criteria, the committee gave us yardsticks without numbers on them, making it impossible to measure the fairness. For example, the criteria called for splitting fewer precincts, but no data was provided on how or when to split a precinct. So what about the maps? The committee made the right choice in adopting county groupings that conform to the North Carolina Constitution, producing a map that improves on the current one, even if that does not itself guarantee that the districts also comply. We also see some progress on compactness, with some better, um, average scores than previous Senate maps. The House districts are less squiggly, but the new maps apparently don't score any better on all of the measures. This suggests that we are still falling short of fair districts. The promise to split fewer precincts came without a target, but we're glad to see that the new map splits far fewer precincts. The House map still splits 49, but there are a lot less than 394 split precincts in 2011. The committee attempted to avoid putting incumbents against each other. This criteria simply has no place in a fair process. Elections should be to protect voters' ability to have their say, not protect incumbents. We haven't been able to assess how the use of political considerations in election results affected the maps, but misuse... I guess my time's up. When I run for state legislature, I'm going to mandate that every microphone be lowered a foot. My name is Barbara Blighwise. I am the, my name is Barbara Blighwise. I am the Fair Elections Chair for the League of Women Voters in Charlotte Mecklenburg. The League was formed in 1920, that secured, it was part of a movement that secured the right to vote for women. The 100th anniversary of that movement is coming soon, and yet we still continue to fight for fair elections. I represent one of over 2,000 chapters of the League throughout the U.S. and one of 18 here in North Carolina. We educate voters on election processes and issues, including gerrymandering and how it rigs elections. Today, our fight continues to end gerrymandering and to reform the redistricting process to create fair maps. Our position on gerrymandering is well documented, and indeed, to a large extent, has been validated by the Supreme Court on June 5th, when they upheld the lower court's ruling that the existing district maps violated the constitutional rights of North Carolina voters. And at that time, new maps were ordered and due September 1st. Since that time, the League has watched legislators and continued to manipulate the process, and we are appalled. We received notice on 17 August to have public comments on 22 August on maps that we got on 19 and 20 August, using and creating maps that use criteria that the net effect of it is disenfranchisement of groups of voters using partisanship as a veiled cover for race. The decision to limit time for response, as well as limiting room for seating, only underscores the fact that you may have no interest in what we have to say, if you're concerned. The effort to be transparent is disingenuous. It erodes public trust in you and undermines the democratic process. These hearings lack the authenticity that we need and the accountability that we demand of elected officials. This isn't about Republicans. It's not about Democrats. It's not about retribution for what happened in the past. It is about integrity and fairness to the voters, to we the people. The good news is you have a chance to fix this. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we ask you, find a way to make maps fair, find a way that it will respect voter laws, and ensure that all votes will count. Thank you.
I was still working. Hi, I'm Dan Brady. I'm a relative newcomer to North Carolina. Hi, I'm Dan Brady. I'm a relative newcomer to the state. I've only been here about eight years. But I have grandchildren who are going to grow up here, uh, and that brings me to this process, this arcane process of redistricting our state. Also, I was raised to have a belief that democracy is something sacred. I've never in my life, since the time I was eligible to vote, missed an election. The only time my vote might not have been counted was when I was on active duty, and I don't think my absentee ballot got back on time. That's why I'm so appalled at what I've seen in the last few years, to try to steal the right to vote from people, their sacred right to vote, simply because they might not vote the right way. And this redistricting process, I'm not naive, I know, has always been a partisan process, but there are certain lines you don't cross, there are certain extremes you go to. And other people have spoken eloquently already to this process that we're going through now. And the excuse, obviously, is that we're under the gun because the court said something has to happen by September 1st, but we're under the gun on this process because of the previous actions of the legislature. And you have a responsibility to something other than political power, and I wish you would recognize it. However, the bottom line at this point is, I don't think there's any way to have a proper prospect, prospect, process, excuse me, in the limited time between now and September 1st. So rather than speak to a committee of the legislature who has failed in their responsibilities and now doesn't have time to properly execute them and clearly doesn't respect this sacred thing called democracy, I'd like to speak directly to the courts involved. Please see these maps for what they are. I personally think, one of the political branches, the legislature should conduct this process, but the legislature, through its own actions, has made this impossible through their negligence, through their lack of taking their responsibilities to us citizens seriously. And so I implore the courts, see the maps for what they are, throw them out. This is one time when I think we would all be better served, regardless of our political strife, by the courts writing the district. This is one time we need the courts to draw the districts and take our legislature out because they have proven that they deserve to be taken out of the process this time. Please, I hope to God, the courts will throw these maps out and give us a map that is true to that sacred ideal of democracy that we should all believe in. Thank you so much.
Next on the list, Senator Big Mom, I have David Taylor for the force favor.
Good afternoon. My name is David Taylor. I'm a resident here in Charlotte. So many speakers before me have spoken so more eloquently than I'm able to, including Mr. Rady. I would remind the people assembled that the state constitution guarantees that our power is derived from the people and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. I'm sorry, if you can't hear. Our constitution guarantees that the power is derived from the people and is instituted solely for the good of the whole, but over the last four years, most of our discourse has been about health, about backrooms, monuments, and campus speech codes, rather than about healthcare, schools, roads, and jobs. Most of this is due to the partisan nature of our politics, where 80% of districts in this state are safely held by one party or the other with no chance for competition. This puts the hands, the power, in the hands of the most extreme members of either party and pretty much disenfranchises 75% of our voters because they don't participate in the primary process and don't have a legitimate choice in the general election. Please, please, let's try to end the partisanship, and our state's politics is destroying this state. Thank you.
I'm a Republican. I was the... I worked on the campaign staff, the jury field, all the other period, the first Republican governor since 1905. A lady woman who became the youngest state special assistant of governor in the history of the state, and that record has not been one broken. I examined the districts, at least our district. I have the opinion that our district is not gerrymandered whatsoever. Other districts may, I have not addressed them. I view it as my source of information on state government, the Malibu Journal, which is a paper that is not favorable to the party law. However, reading the Wolf's Morning paper, there is an article which indicates that the list... I didn't examine the detail, but they say the process was done favorably. One, and talking about the districts here, I still hate what was work counted more than much more than anything else. I think another point that indicates that our district is not gerrymandered was the fact that Senator Vought was put into a district was Republican Senator Ramaham and Wilkes, a proposition which I strongly favor, because Senator Vought has never indicated that she clearly understands the needs of our district. During the course of her time, I've been to our counties. Caldwell is 64th for Captain Income. Wataga is 49th. Asher 60th. Allen 73rd. She wants to dismiss all of this and vote with high-income districts. She also wants to talk about tax issues and... excuse me, middle-class tax reduction, which is a lie. She's ordered a bill in the legislature last session, there was only, if you make $327,000 a year, you get a $19,000 tax reduction. If you make only, if you make true liberal income, 20%, you only get $252. So they all did the same thing on your representative poll. If you make low income, you only get $252. I'll rest my case, I saw the top, I'll give it to someone else.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hapman, and I live in Hickory. I'm under... I could be under many other roles, and I'm going to take up a lot of time. I was at the League of Women Voters for 38 years. I currently serve on the board of Hickory NAACP, among individuals, and I'm with everybody that asked me to do something. So I'm here today to make it very brief. I want to address the General Assembly with a few facts. There's a recent poll, very recent, shows that four out of five North Carolina voters, that's 80%, say it's not fair for politicians to draw their own districts. The poll includes 85% Democrats, 74% Republicans, and 80% of independents. The redistricting process must be open, avoid racial or partisan gerrymandering, and allow voters to pick their own political representatives and not the other way around. Now, you, in this new map, you can still tell the same consultant, Thomas Holford, who drew the current illegal maps. And how on earth can you expect to come out with a map that is representative of every voter in North Carolina? These new maps, now I've had a short time, very, very short time to study, only corrects about 10%. What's happened to the other 9%? Well, we need to redo them. The General Assembly leaders have spent $4.8 million of taxpayers' money to defend their maps in court, and they keep losing. I want to end my speech by saying, stop wasting our money and get a nonpartisan committee to draw new maps. Thank you.
I'm Mary Moritz, and I'm from New York. I live in El Salvador County, for those of you who might not know. Here, as Russians or other enemy nations might do to cause Americans to lose faith in our election process, hails England, Britain, and what we have done to our service. How does we have a legitimate democracy when the constitution is willfully manipulated to take away the principle of one person, one vote via gerrymandering? Both parties are guilty. I'm old, so I know it's both parties. Oh, how you must congratulate yourselves for having cleverly. You have manipulated this system. It is only a matter of time until the present minority party will exchange places with the majority party and play the payback game, and perhaps with vengeance. Let's end that now. Let's resolve the past on North Carolina constitutional amendments that reforms the process of redistricting so that it is fair for all citizens now and in the future. In order to accomplish such a change, what we need are legislators who are statesmen and not politicians. What we need are legislators who believe that equality and democracy are more important than party. What we need are legislators who rise above competitive game of gotcha and rise to the challenge of integrity, honesty, and fairness. What we need are legislators who reflect the moral code upon which our nation was built and not politicians who oblige themselves for their clever exploitation. Yes, Democrats, I am giving you a tongue-lashing. And yes, Republicans, I am giving you a tongue-lashing too. Don't make me have to come along and do the killing. With common management, I'm living wire when I talk to government to my high school students. I've told them that indeed, America is the shining city on the hill, that we model for all nations and all peoples, that our democracy honors all people of all races, colors, and creeds. Through its practice of one person, one vote, you have a mockery of our ideals. I am calling on you now to repent and to clean up your ground. I would like to suggest a room break for redistricting. More, every word is with the Constitution behind the states, each district shall have populations, equal populations. Two, the creation of districts shall protect the national and ethnic voting rights in the course of the Shaw versus Renna. Three, districts shall be compact. Four, districts shall follow established political boundaries such as cities and counties. Thank you. The overriding concept of promoting one person, one vote should and must be our vision.
When the four speakers come up?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Engler. My name is Cheryl Engler. I'm a student of mathematics. I'm also a teacher of mathematics. Okay, now I came here today, I got handed this pretty math. Somebody had used eight crayons to color it. Now, if you know anything about mathematics, you should not take it with a cracker, you should take it with a computer. Um, and there's no data behind this. I mean, I have the data, it's a pretty picture, but without data, they're meaningless. Now, one person, I heard say that some data came out today, that's not a sign, look right before, hang on, that's a funny business. But I really would wish you guys who come into the 21st century, there's software out there, unbiased software. We don't need a biased consultant, Republican or Democrat. Software does this, no matter what state you're in, no matter what county you're in. Finish your games, get us a room. Thank you.
I think on all sides that these aspects of the first proposal might be tolerated and are undoubtable in transitioning between sites and home services go down the process. But we are now going to move on to Guilford text.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representative Stevens here again. We had one more representative join us, Representative Davis Gray, kind of joined the facility, and I wanted to announce that. We are prepared with our four speakers. We have Michael Owens, Derek Smith, Betsy Weiss, and Chanelle James.
I'd like to start by thanking the General Assembly for holding this forum. I don't envy the work you have ahead of you. My name is Michael Owens. I am honored to serve as the vice chair for the South County Republican Party. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the General Assembly for the work they've done over the last few years. They repaid roughly $3 billion to the federal government a year ahead of schedule. They've increased teacher pay more than once, and they've established a rainy day fund with hundreds of millions of dollars to be used in the event of an emergency or national disaster. They've done all of this while lowering personal and business income taxes, propelling North Carolina to one of the best states in the country to do business. In regards to the maps, whatever the outcome is of this process, there's going to be a lawsuit. You can take race into account, there's going to be a lawsuit. You cannot take race into account, there's going to be a lawsuit. I know it, and you know it. To accentuate that, there is so many that are going to be today who sued the state of voter ID. I doubt it's a coincidence that they're here today. I wonder if those organizations were included at all in this process? If not, why not? If for no other reason than to have them at least partially accountable for the outcome? And I'll link this to those in the minority party who have talked so much about gerrymandering. I wonder if you considered your districts gerrymandered when you were in fact the majority party for all over the century? Thank you.
Good afternoon, North Carolina. My name is Derek Smith. I'm the political action chair for the Greensboro chapter here of the NAACP. I'm also the political action chair for State Congress of Chapters of the NAACP. And I'm standing here with my president, Reverend Curtis Brown, from the Greensboro chapter of the NAACP. And I want to get right off the bat to this old deal about Mr. Thomas Holfelder. Let's think about these cases that we have to deal with here in North Carolina. The list is long. Dixon versus Bruchow. City of Greensboro versus Guilford County Board of Elections, Senate Wade. We've had to deal with Harris-Cooper case. The list is quite long. Of course, the famous coverage case with Supreme Court, Rule 9 and the O, even with Clarence Thomas on board, ruling that these are unconstitutionally constituted districts. Yet somehow, in their infinite wisdom, this General Assembly believes that it must continue to pay Thomas Holfelder, to continue to do this to the taxpayer of state North Carolina. So the message that they're sending here, either they like what he's doing, and they're just rewarding in college. I believe they like what he's doing, because they can maintain power, keep the system all locked up in the legal process while they maintain power. So number one, Thomas Holfelder got it wrong. Number two, let's talk about race. One of the criteria that this General Assembly believes that it needs to shove down our throats is that it needs to take race completely off the table, as though there is no equal protection clause and as though there's no Voting Rights Act, Section 2. Because they've gotten in trouble with race by packing black folks into specific districts to maintain their power illegally. Now they just want to do away with it. Don't even consider race, as though the Voting Rights Act doesn't apply. We're not going to let them do it. And the third thing I want to talk about is, don't let this General Assembly put you into believing that incumbency is about incumbents. First of all, it is, in the fact that that's what they're trying to protect, which is not in the interest of anybody in state North Carolina. It's only in the interest of people who are incumbents. But here is the issue, the incumbency that they're protecting is illegal. It's been illegal, since all these courts have ruled that it's illegal. So what they're trying to protect... Okay. Oh, time is up, but you know what they're trying to protect. Don't let them do it in North Carolina.
But this is our, I don't know why, I want to keep it busy. Betsy Price?
Hello, my name is Betsy Price. I stand here tired of it. I'm tired of listening to my neighbor's favorite or seeing on the news a new law passed that I disagree with. I'm tired of the legislature in Raleigh that passes laws that discriminate, and I'm tired of the passing them in the middle of the night, and I'm tired of the legislature that fights our governor... And I'm tired of the legislature that fights our governor and Attorney General at every time. These, I believe, are the results of gerrymandering. And I'm also confused. Confused that our Republicans in Raleigh chose Saint Gaud to redraw the maps that were drawn along the first time. And confused that they used my tax money to do it. $50,000. And I'm also confused why the ruling party gets to choose to redraw the maps. That rule needs to go. So I propose to the good people of North Carolina that we appoint an independent counsel, chosen by the people to draw these maps. Use this case to draw them so that people that live together, work together, and play together can choose because they want to represent them. Gerrymandering sounds a lot like Jerry did to me. First, the whispers of Jim Snakes. I wonder what picture looks out there this time? So I say no to the new map, draw them, and make it fair.
Hello, my name is Chanelle Elton James, and I am a citizen of Greensboro. I'm also a plaintiff in the coveting case, the federal lawsuit in which the three-judge court invalidated 28 states, state houses, and state districts as unconstitutional racial gender gerrymanders. I'm here today to discuss my concerns about the criteria this committee is using to draw its proposed maps. First, your criteria is flawed because three of the committee's criteria use the 2011 plans as its starting point for measuring success, but these plans have been called unconstitutional racial gerrymanders. The proper benchmark to use would be the last constitutional plans, those that came before 2011 plans. Instead, the committee is officially tying its current maps to the unconstitutional maps, correct its criteria on compatibility, split precincts, and unincumbency protection. On election day, the committee's decision to allow drawing maps based on political considerations is a repeat of the process if followed to mature partisan advantages when the redraw of congressional districts in 2016. This use of political power is improper. Data on incumbents' addresses and past election returns should be used only to ensure that the district do not unusually favor any party or individual while complying with federal laws not to ensure partisan outcomes. We believe this improper use of political data likely exposes the legislature for liability for partisan gerrymandering, just as did the medieval congressional plans. Second, with respect to compatibility, it seems plain to us, even having had the maps for such a small amount of time, that the legislature has prioritized incumbency protection over compatibility. The North Carolina Supreme Court has explained that compliance with the state constitutional whole county provision requires that districts must be compatible. Incumbency protection, while perhaps an acceptable consideration that applied equally to incumbents of both parties, cannot supersede requirements of the state constitution. Thus, your failure to establish criteria that appropriately weighs state constitutional criteria above other criteria is futile problematic. Finally, this committee's decision to altogether ignore race is a problem, and it defies the direction of the court. The use of race in the district is not an all or nothing approach. Issues of race are nuanced, and not just given to districts. The law reflects this as explained at length by the Covington Court, and as reiterated by this committee on some of your members, although they were ignored. This court instructed the General Assembly that a one-size-fits-all racial classification violates the constitution and hurts voters like me.
Thank you. Our four speakers will look to Halifax Committee College on site that's coming in and for hold.
We had Speaker number four, Janet Hoy, and Speaker number five, Richard Stratt. We'll draw their names. We'll start with Speaker number six, Edith Bragton, and then move Speaker number seven, eight, and nine.
Thank you. My name is Edith Bragton, and I live in Halifax. This is the first time that I have ever felt moved to come to any kind of a meeting like this, and it is because I feel the maps, the gerrymandered maps are so bad. It is very important that people speak up when they see these things. I think the maps should be free from partisan politics, first of all. I think that they should comply with the Civil Rights Act. I think that the maps should be fair. Gerrymandering hurts all of us. We have to get rid of it now. I understand that politicians currently in power would like to stay in power. I understand that politicians want to win. You don't have to be scared. All you have to do is represent all of us. You can win if you represent all of us. Gerrymandering equals voter suppression. Don't do that.
Mr. Chairman, we also had for the record, Alex Under Smith, England, join us.
I'm Eva Clayton, a former member of Congress. I speak today because I want to be on record, so all be clear, that the right to vote is the most precious right we have as Americans. And indeed, redistricting is one way to deny that. I, for one, know the value of redistricting, was part of the challenge that indeed created the two congressional districts in North Carolina. This is no more than a sham. If the process is flawed, the product is flawed. And to the extent that this hearing is being called at the last minute, very limited information, to the extent we use the same system that created the illegal system in the very beginning, the audacity to think that the system would be so naive to think that you could do this to America. We are just coming from the whole celebration of the accident of Charlottesville. Indeed, we understand what it is to be an American or not to be an American pushing on statutes. Well, the statute that creates the civil rights law is essential to being an American. So North Carolinian delegates, or members of the Senate, the General Assembly, or the House, to the extent that you say that all Americans indeed should be free, all Americans are equal, to the extent you say that and believe that, this redistricting plan has indeed to be redrawn. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Ross Holmes, and I'm a resident of Warren County. My message to all of the legislators is simple. Candidates must be elected by the diverse groups that are located in jurisdictions. Gerrymandering is not necessary when candidates campaign and learn the people for which you represent in all shades and weeks. Abide by the law. I agree with many of the comments made earlier by my fellow citizens in this room. It's all about the process, such as including paying attention to the crowd in your respective rooms, to gain insight of those assembled here and noticing whether they agree to or not. So in the spirit of ensuring our vote is not suppressed, neither shall our show of support for comments made that I think would be helpful in your report of public feelings by using sign language. I think that's what we've been reduced to do. This is another example of how one must seek and gain understanding of the people you are elected to serve. Thank you.
I don't know how the rooms are set up in other places here. My name is Warren Heitzanrader. I'm the pastor at Jackson Baptist Church. I don't know how the other rooms are set up in other places. It appears that people are talking to a crowd of people. Here, we speak to a camera, a wall, and three guys in suits. And I've certainly spoken to three guys in suits before when we have low attendance on Sunday, but I prefer to speak to a crowd, and there's a crowd here. So I'm going to turn around, and I've got a timer going, so hopefully I won't go with the three minutes. I wonder, I'm not asking for a vote, but how well we're able to hear what's going on in other places. I've struggled to hear the comments going on. And it seems to me that people who have prepared things to say are being disrespected by the fact that their words get jumbled and messed up so that people across the state in what's supposed to be a public hearing are not able to be heard. It would appear that in the process of creating these districts, we have found another way to suppress people's voices. There are lots of ways to silence people's voices. One is to deny them the vote, which we have done this in this state. We have a long history of doing that, even after suffrage, even after the Voting Rights Act, even after 2017. We still find ways to do it. Another way to silence people is to place them in districts by drawing lines around in three counties and through neighborhoods. Another way to do it is to threaten people with expulsion if they choose to express their appreciation for a speaker, as the person before me has just said. Another way, which seems trivial by comparison, is to use technology and equipment that is inadequate to the task of spreading a public hearing across the public, across the state, and I realize it's a tiny thing. I'm no expert at doing this kind of thing, but I've been involved in webcasts before, and this is probably the worst one I've ever seen. I just, you know, I think there's glass fiber going all over the state between community colleges. I can't understand why it works this way. Why, if this is so important, are there such inadequate resources brought into play to accomplish or to fail to accomplish? The technology makes voices sound like Mr. Ed and Fred Munster and Mickey Mouse stuck down in a well. And that's disrespectful, and it disregards the importance of what's going on here. It seems like it's just another little tiny thing, just like another little tiny vote, just like another little percentage difference that it makes when you move a congressional line. But all these just things make things unjust. A man I knew named Tex Sample once told, talked with us about the problem he had with his two sons, who had a hard time sharing the task of mowing the lawn. The older one would always take the easy part, leaving the hard part for the younger one. Tex drew a map of the room, and he said, a map of the yard, and he said, the older one, said to the older one, divide the yard up any way you want, and said to the younger one, you pick which side you want to mow. I wish we could do voting that way.
(INAUDIBLE) to vote, to the Dallas? Uh, (INAUDIBLE).
My name is Dave Wickersham, 38th Sunshine Drive in Rockville, North Carolina. I am Chairman of the Republican Party of Pamlico County. My comments today specifically address Pamlico County. On February 8, 1872, the General Assembly of North Carolina ratified, quote, "An act to lay off and establish a new county by the name of Pamlico," end quote. This new county was made up of land from the existing counties of Craven and Moulton, and we've formed a close relationship with them for the last 145 years. A computer line drawn on a map is not recognizing the people, the lives, or their daily activities. We are an inland county. We are not a coastal county. We are not connected in any way with the other counties in this proposed three districts. Pamlico County is not contiguous, and dare I refer to that county. The only connection is a long drive through Moulton County via Washington or a tedious ferry ride. On the other hand, Craven and Carter County are accessible by a couple lane highway or a very short, convenient, 20-minute ferry ride. We do banking, air travel, car buying, shopping, and enjoy dining and entertainment in our neighboring counties. Our retired military are constantly commuting back and forth to Cherry Point. Our children take bus trips to the North Carolina border and other points of interest in our neighboring counties. The closest hospital and other much-needed medical services are only 25 miles away. There is a significant flow of people between our three counties. Our inland coastal location on the Neuse and Pamlico Rivers have resulted in very special state regulations the dare I refer to that don't have. Of course, they have their own set of burdens and regulations to deal with. To be blunt, our modest population of 13,000 means the much larger counties to our north will mean that we simply will be lost in the shuffle. It is hard to imagine anyone alike in this proposed new district would spend much time with us, or more importantly, represent our needs and concerns in the legislation. I implore you to reconsider this alignment and leave Pamlico County with neighbors with whom we work, live, recreate, and worship as a community of shared interests. Please examine again not only your responsibility to comply with court order, but your human responsibility of doing the right thing instead of just taking yet another political action. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I will hold to pray my words are heard. Please let us stay as we are with our neighbors and shared communities in Craven, Moulton, and Carter County. Because in the case of Pamlico County as part of three districts, we go, it is not fair, it is not contiguous, it is not more compact, and it is not respectful of community and shared interests. Thank you.
(INAUDIBLE).
(INAUDIBLE).
Good evening. My name is Ray Leary. I reside in Chalkwindy, North Carolina, and I'm here representing the citizens of better government of Botha County. We do not understand why this committee has chosen to include Botha County in a North Carolina senatorial district that has no commonality with coastal communities. Botha County has approximately 80 statute miles of estuary waters that Botha County is connecting. Now, this association is historically to the coastal counties that hide in their counties. Would you?
(INAUDIBLE).
(INAUDIBLE).
All we can hear is this voice. Go ahead, turn it up.
Well, it says it's on, and I'll just talk louder. We have nothing in common with Vance, North Hampton, and Warren Counties. We do not know why anyone would suggest this plan. It makes no sense. If there is a plausible explanation for this gerrymandering, we would certainly like to hear why that is from this committee. We do not need this, we do not want this, and we do not deserve to be shut out in Raleigh. Is it not sufficiently corrupt that Botha County has to endure limited voting for county representatives, and now this new Senate district map is conjured up to deprive us of representation in North Carolina Senate? The Redistricting Committee has been provided with an acceptable modification to the new map by the Botha County Republican Party Executive Committee. The Botha County citizens of better government support this revision and respectfully request to correct this rather egregious redistricting plan. Such a change will actually better comply with the published criteria for redistricting than the current proposed map does. Thank you for allowing the citizens to provide you with these recommendations, and we sincerely hope you will honor not only our request, but others who have proposed this same modification. Thank you very much.
(INAUDIBLE).
And now this new senate district map is conjured up to deprive us of representation in North Carolina senate? The redistricting committee has been provided with an acceptable modification to the new map by the Balfour County Republican Party Executive Committee. The Balfour County citizens of better government support this revision and respectfully request to correct this rather egregious redistricting plan. Such a change will actually better comply with the published criteria for redistricting than the current proposed map does. Thank you for allowing the citizens to provide you with these recommendations, and we sincerely hope you will honor not only our request, but others who have proposed this same modification. Thank you very much.
My name is Gerald Seifert. I'm a Balfour County resident. And I did not intend to come to this meeting, but the more I thought about it, the more upset I am. Holding a meeting at 4:00 is not a public meeting, because in Balfour County, we're a tier-one community, and a lot of the people that are working think it's not affordable to take off a half-day and lose those wages to come make comments, so I thought I would just come. If you look at Balfour County, fishing, crabbing, shrimping, that's what we do. We're a coastal community. And I look at the map, and I see we're with Vance, Warren, and Northampton. They're bedlocked. They don't have any water. So if we have political representation from someone that wins the election up in those counties, they have no clue if Balfour County does. We should be put back into the coastal community where the representation will have some knowledge of at least what we do in this county. Thank you.
My name is Mary Jones, and I'm from Washington County. And I don't like speaking in public, but addressing the topic of how our neighborhoods and counties have been assessed for that before. These new districts are more compact than the current ones that we are now under. These districts respect our community and our shared interests with our neighbors. These districts respect the pathway of contiguity with means, which means being close or drawn together with all parts of each district being connected. It is this way for our county. It may not be so for some of you others. But I endorse these maps. They are less split-up counties than before.
My name is Gerald. Thank you. I will announce. We have, it looks like, about nine minutes.
That's Anna Blackburn, Andrew Newsom, Lynn Howka, Robert Wallen. That's four, and if they go to five, please watch the minute.
Good evening. I'm Anna Blackburn. I'm the state's Latino liaison for the North Carolina NAACP. Democracy is once again at stake, because it is being stolen by an illegitimate general assembly. This is not just my opinion, but that of the court system. The Supreme Court found the North Carolina white supermajority rigged the election by using racist gerrymandering to win their seats. I am personally tired about hearing that the Republicans gerrymandered us well. We are talking about the here and the now. Two wrongs don't make a right. Here we go again, with all that in mind, and after being found guilty by the Supreme Court, nine to zero of racist gerrymandering. You would think that at least a logical person would take steps to admit and attempt to remedy the situation honestly, but no, not our North Carolinian supermajority. They turned around and hired the very consultant who drew the previous racist gerrymandered maps, and to add insult to injury, gave him a raise. Public records show that Mr. Hoffler has received 50,000 of public funds to redraw the map once again. Yet, whenever we exercise a right to protest and rally, the rhetoric we hear from the supermajority is, "The people elected us. They have spoken. Stop your whining." Well, I'm here to tell you, the people haven't spoken, because you saw to that by reading the maps. Which is exactly what you are attempting to once again do. The public, this public hearing, is a sham. And what a total disrespect to the people of North Carolina, the hard-looking voters of this state, that you will hold seven hearings at this time when so many people cannot get here and call that you are honest leadership and trying to do the right thing by the people. It would be a bigger crisis to democracy if I would not stand up to the injustice that this general assembly is trying to do by silence the people of the state of North Carolina. Adelante, pronto, ni un paso atrás. Forward together, now one step back.
Hello, my name is Resistance, and I'm a resident of Cumberland County. And so I have the message to Chairman Lewis and also Vice Chairman Sokah. Stop insulting the intelligence of the residents of our great state. It is about time that you all become representative of who you represent. It has been way too long that you think that this is the best that you can do. Are you serious? I am infuriated, disrespected, upset that this is why we're here today. And to think that, when you look at our Cumberland County as it comes down to the House districts, that it's a conflict of interest as our vice chairman's district gets larger, if you look at the maps. The definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over and over again and expect different results. So, the members of the redistricting committee, maybe you're a little insane, and it's time for you to come home.
My name is Lynn Howka. I live in Hope County. I'm a relative newcomer to North Carolina, and I chose to stay here because I love this state. And the more that I learn about the antics of gerrymandering and voter suppression by the legislature, the more horrified I am. I would remind you that a core tenet of democracy is that a healthy democracy requires a principled opposition. A healthy democracy requires a principled opposition. Because the plurality of perspectives is how we progress as a society and support everyone, from the most privileged to the most vulnerable. The legislative supermajority has lost sight of this requirement of a principled opposition, doing everything they can to stamp out any opposition. And so we have a sick democracy in our state that's infected with partisanship, disenfranchisement, and cruelty to most vulnerable people. These new maps show intent to protect the illegal supermajority. And so the sickness that infects our democracy will continue if these maps are adopted. For us to view our democracy must have a truly open process that allows voters to choose their representative and the partisan and racial gerrymandering now, so that our representatives truly represent all of us. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Roberta Wallen. I'm chair of the Cumberland County Democratic Party. Every legislative district in Cumberland has been redrawn. While the lines of the districts do appear to be more compact, I have no data on the results of these changes. I don't know whether these districts help or hinder our party. They totally don't. I don't know if redistricts will meet Justice Department approval regarding racial distribution. I cannot determine if they are fair. I would very much like to comment on the proposed redistricting maps presented here today. However, the process has been so secret, and the hearings scheduled without sufficient time to evaluate them, it is very hard to do so. The reason we are so rushed at this time is because the legislators in charge have delayed redrawing other districts as long as they could, and they have not allowed for public input. Courts have ruled that the current maps are gerrymandered with surgical precision. Considering that the new maps have been drawn under the same legislative direction and done by the same technical services, it seems likely that we have a very similar outcome. I call for an independent commission to draw maps that allow fair representation for all, meaning that minorities would have a fair chance to be represented in the legislature, that the parties would be proportionally represented, and that there would be pure safe districts for all. Thank you. I, oh, okay. I am Roberta Wallen, Chair of the Cumberland County Democratic Party.
Mr. Chair, the second speaker was Andrew Newsom of Advanced Carolina, and the third speaker was Lynn Howka of Cape Fear Indivisible.
Thank you very much. We will have, we will, we're going to go to, we will increase the number of speakers in each side to five, as that does seem to slightly, there wasn't a change, but we're coming back here to Raleigh. We will begin with Rosalie Dominique, then Bubba Mayers, then Rachel Lynch, Corey Williams, and I guess Coles. So in that order, we'll begin with Rosalie Dominique.
Hi, I'm Rosalie Dominique, the chair, and I think the message you've been hearing is very clear. We need an approach to redistricting that is transparent, acceptable to both parties, and enduring. This is the only way to ensure a true democracy. Plus, we have a long-term solution to draw the issues. We won't have the opportunity for our officials to spend all the time they need to spend and the budgets that are available on education, healthcare, and infrastructure development that we distracted by the redistricting problem until it's truly solved in a nonpartisan way. So the process used to draw those maps from flat transparency and appears to have, once again, resulted in maps that are rigged to favor black party, a black party. But the citizens of North Carolina truly deserve better, and this is a problem you fix. You have that power. It's one of those things that you can fix pretty easily. So I hope that you will do it right then. Thank you.
Bubba Mayers, you ready to ask for Donald Dixie to read?
My name is Bubba Mayers. I am a school servant, a state home mom, so I'm literally a lady. I'm sure you guys all have some fears. If your children miss a day, you will remember them. If they did it again, you will probably remember them again, right? So in this case, I'm not sure why we're going back to the same earth, to draw the same maps. And I'm not sure why we'd expect the people to encourage it, to say, "Yeah, you can do the same mistake again." So I'm just asking myself, is it your time and our time on unnecessary boxes, boxes that we can't just have done and cure for everybody?
Thank you. Thank you. Well, now, I'm going to Rachel Leach. Her time will take six minutes. Is everyone here? Okay, moving on, Corey Williams. In order, they recognize Corey Williams. Her time will take three minutes.
Hi there. It helps you. I was in the morning. I am a mom from House District 56 and District 2040, and I brought my very expensive vigil aids that I can say. In November of last year, I had no idea what's in the District 56 or House District 56. I was on PTA. I was volunteering, but I wasn't really wanting what was going on here. The special sessions turned that around for me, and I really didn't have to pay attention. I came down. Some of you, I recognize, were sitting in their offices, don't need to talk to me. But I wanted to know what was going on in this state, and I wanted to find the dedicated civil servants who set aside their interests and serve for $14,000 a year and do this, so clearly we care. And I've met some thoughtful, capable, dedicated North Carolinians. I've had lunch with you, and I respect you, but also seen some of the most contemptible stunts, the likes of which would land these two guys in the Noddy Center. This set of maps, Noddy Center. I sat and rained for a courtroom and listened to Mr. Start for his name. His very thin argument, "We're not playing with the process for partisan reasons." They were instead dedicated to ensuring that public comment is heard and taken under advisement. And these people clearly care. We've heard great comments from North Carolinians around the state. I'm glad to hear that you want public comment, and I'm hoping that this time, Mr. Hoffler hears all of these public comments. So, we're not at the polls today. They've got all their suits to come see you, so I'd like to show you what I think. These maps don't just fail the suspicious gap test, they fail the chump test. And while I realize it's still legal, it's not ethical, it's not right, and it's not wrong for this world. We're all waiting for the shots of spring court decision, and we're all tired of the day that it rose to argument. I love them doing it. You guys should be the leaders. In terms of racial gerrymandering, police thinks that on Saturday it's not given the adequate chance to really assess whether a woman has been cheated here. But I'll tell you, as a Black woman, I have listened over and over to protestations that the people, the members of this body, are not racist. All I can say to you at this moment, with no data, is that I hope that when we look hard at the work that's done, it won't be validated, because moms will come to the ballot box. And we're sending it, it's not providing effective, not even. There are some sponsors who are committed. We saw House 200, we saw Representative Plus computer redistricting discussion. This isn't, those are all relatives. This isn't really an issue of partisanship. It's an issue of competency. So you go home tonight, you look at your, you chuff in, and you brush your teeth, and look at yourself in here, just like I'm going to. Ask yourself, "Do I feel good about this?" And I'm happy with these maps. It is fair to our town.
Hi, this is Colston. I recognize for time, but I'm going to take three minutes.
Hi, my name's Ailin Colston. I live here in Wake County. I'm speaking to you today as a North Carolinian and as the mother, wife, sister, and daughter of North Carolinians. At the beginning of this meeting today, you guys can remember back that long ago, been here a while already, it feels like, you asked for the most help in complying with the court order, and I'm so happy to hear that. It's great to ask for help when you need it. I would think it's helpful to go back and think about the basics, to remind ourselves of the basics. Why do we have voting districts, to begin with? It is so that people have a representative, someone to look out for them in the interest of their community when it comes to writing laws and making the decisions that affect all of our everyday lives. I've already written to you and outlined the reasons that voting districts should be drawn with the purpose of ensuring that every person in North Carolina has a voice, and every person in North Carolina has the opportunity to elect someone to represent them. They should not be drawn for making easier for politicians to keep their jobs. I have covered a lot of reasons given for why the maps were drawn the way they were back in 2001, and also the new proposed ones. What I have not heard is anybody say they drew the maps because they thought it was in the best interest of North Carolinians to draw them this way. I have not heard one person involved in drawing the maps say they drew them that way because they thought that was what would ensure the best future for North Carolina. What I would really like to hear is somebody involved in drawing the maps is for you to say, and then for you to follow through, and when you're making these decisions and drawing the maps, think about, ask people these questions, two questions. Will this help the people of Will this help the people of North Carolina? Number two, will this improve North Carolina's future? You guys asked for help and pine with the court order. I'll give you back three minutes. So it's possible to incorporate things back reference, I think, to this candy thing. You've got it to redistricting, and your own staff did a great job on, send your public website. Anyone can download it. The only thing that's changed is there are now fewer protections for still disadvantaged communities. I'd also like to mention the actual court issues behind H and T all along, and how we got here. It's not to let us do the right thing. Thank you.
Next up is Claudia Collins, and then Andrea George. As we have my own presence. Claudia Collins, she represents for Tom Dickson, three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Saudi Khulz, and I'm speaking as a citizen of North Carolina who's worried about our state for the time of polarized politics. But I'm also here as a historian from your university. I'm a historian of Germany in the twentieth century, and I'm particularly interested in what happens when polarized party politics takes the place of national concern. Nonpartisan electoral maps are a first step towards restoring the trust that is the bedrock of democracy. That kind of trust is what we need here. I have to say, I have never done this before. I've never even come to a meeting like this, but I have been horrified by the amount of cynicism and ambiguity I've been among those people I run into every day. So, let's step back from our situations today. What can we learn from the past? Textbooks tell us that Hitler destroyed democracy in nineteen thirty-three. That's wrong. German politicians killed off German democrats starting in the late twenties by putting their partisan political self-interest above the common good. He went after the Great Depression with one-third unemployment. Action was urgent. What did politicians do? Nothing. Major bills died when wanting majority. Five national elections in four years, there was no local coalitions, only more big law. Humorists laughed. They said, "How is this, looking like a barber, all awake at either end?" But the outcome wasn't positive. The more politicians fought, the more rigid they became. A dangerous spiral started, over-citizens, and movements for politicians, partisan, and children, threw back and back. So what's happening here today, I think Eva Wayne said this more and more eloquently than I can possibly say it, but we have been waiting all summer for these maps, and now at eleven dollars, when it is too late, I suggest we need a fresh start. We need to ask for our input, please. Take the, get rid of the deadline. Do not trust the firm that drew these maps. Pass House School Two Hundred. Point a panel of experts, politicians, monitors, and geologists to read on nonpartisan districts with both sides equally unactive. From a historian's perspective, I suppose you just missed that. Voter disgust can lead to ambiguity. It can produce voter outs and declining crime. But disgust can also produce rage, holding for us to be considered by every legislator concerned with this or her reelection. Think of where we were yesterday, all of us at two forty-five in the afternoon. We all felt together watching the incredible clips. That's the kind of feeling in a community, and together this, I hope you will help us achieve, and help political life. Thank you.
Next up is Andrea George. I recognize for Tom Dickson.
Hi, my name is Andrea George. And first of all, I just want to say, I'm, thank you for the privilege of being in this country, and thank you for the privilege, what we need to vote. And I just want to give a reminder that there are places in this world where people will walk for a week to vote. And making voting as easy as possible for everybody is, I can't see that as a priority. It's a privilege. It's a privilege that people die to vote, and we need to respect that. Secondly, I've heard on a lot about division. As I've sat here, most of, I've heard all this division. I've heard one, once, and I've heard earlier, comment about the devil's tactics, the devil's tactics on division. And we keep dividing ourselves by race, and color, and creed. Division is a means of division. We will never come to a better. Secondly, I'm pleased personally to see a map that's overall without racial considerations, with no racial being done. I am thrilled, because that's where we want to be. That's where our future, I hope, will be one day. But as far as I understand, following the voting rights maps, the communities are meticulous for the most part. I heard any one, one coastal community come to me about that, but for the most part, the races and the, and the, the districts are meticulous. And that's important, people living together, sharing common leaders, maybe we would do that instead of the lobby. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the committee, as well members of the public, we're going to need to spend for a few minutes with our, ask questions of our court order, give our few moments to catch a break, as we may say, in this process. So, members, spend.